Welcome to ELN, Elevation Lifestyle Network. And we travel up and down the valley and try to get information from our local community in the Roaring Fork Valley. And today, we're with Jeffrey Evans. Before we get into this, and Jeffrey is actually running for county commissioner for Pittkin County, District 5.
Pittkin County Commissioner, District 5.
But before we get into that, Jeff, tell us, tell us your background and where you came from before moving to the Roaring Fork Valley.
Well, I was born and raised in Southern California in the Mojave Desert in a very small town. And we moved to the coast when I was about 12 years old. And at 18, I came to Colorado on the pretense of checking out the college in Boulder. Because if I had continued to go to school, I would have been for architecture. So while there, I came up to Aspen for the weekend to visit a friend. So I got two stock jokes. One, it's been a long weekend. The other one is, I've been too broke to leave ever since. But that was a half-century, I hit the half-century mark two weeks ago.
So then, when you moved to Aspen, what was, what were some of the first things that you did here as a job?
Oh, let's see, I was a short-order cook at the Five Hoods Restaurant. Now, we should have a little prize for anybody who could tell you where the Five Hoods Restaurant was located. I actually, the first job I had, it was the first place I stayed, which was the Mouse House. It was a little converted flop house kind of thing that had just opened up. And they had a special, if you wanted to stay in the bunk beds in, what was the converted garage? They had a dorm, you know, space. It was a dollar a night, and the seventh night was free if you wanted to stay for a week. So my accommodations for my first week in Aspen was $6.
And then, were you a ski enthusiast?
I had never been, I had never been to a ski resort. I came here in the summertime.
Oh, that's different.
It's a little unusual. I fell in love with the place in the summertime, came up here in Little, in about the middle of July, and the Mouse House turned into my first job. Because by the time the winter came around, we all had to be out because he was going to make the big bucks with the skiers coming in.
Gotcha.
That left three or four of us with no place to go, so he created a little space up in the crawl space above the ceiling, and I was the assistant manager, I think.
Oh, you worked your way up by then?
Uh, well, that was the only position there was. Yeah, he was handing out titles just because, why not? Why wouldn't you? You know, here's a title.
So what is it, after that, just move on to that next stage in, in the Aspen life, which, how old were you then?
18.
You were 18?
Yep. Came here, came here under my own power when I was 18 years old.
From the Mojave Desert?
Well, actually, again, we had moved to the coast. I'd lived in Ventura for about five years. So we were right on the ocean, we were eight blocks from the ocean. It was quite a contrast.
Ocean to the mountains.
Yep. Desert, ocean, mountains.
Yeah, well, at least you came in the summertime, so it was a little bit easier transition.
And I thought I would ski that first winter until I found out how much it cost. Now, think about that for a minute. How expensive it was in 1970, yeah. Oh, I better not do that.
Oh, my gosh.
It was, I was, I lived here eight years where I learned how to ski.
Oh.
And I never did get very good at it.
You weren't an unusual guest that I've never had before.
Yeah, I got other peculiarities we might get. But that's one of them, you know, I'm not the usual story. And it was really unusual to have moved from California. Because in 1970, anybody who left California either went to Oregon or Hawaii. Like never, you know, nobody had ever heard of East. So I was out here about five or six years before other Californians started showing up. It was all Michigan and Texas and New York and, you know, the people who moved here, hardly anybody from the West Coast when I first lived up here in the seventies.
Well, now, we're getting another wave coming in, and we won't even go there.
Well, by the eighties, we had the bumper stickers, you know, don't Californic, can't Colorado.
Yeah, I remember that, because I came in the eighties.
Oh, you were one of them, yeah?
Yes, I was one of them, that's right. I was one of them, I never thought, yeah.
And of course, when I got here in the seventies, the big talk was, the town's been ruined, no one's going to come anymore, the hippies have destroyed the place.
Yes.
Well, I had hair down to my shoulders and a beard down to my pocket top. I thought, I thought that was very amusing, because I literally couldn't walk through downtown without someone stopping me and asking me for directions. So, you know, the tourists, I barely had no problem with it.
So, is that how you got into the tourist industry?
I got into the tourist industry because I loved to travel.
Okay.
And my goal had always been to have a home base somewhere and then travel as much as possible. And at one point, I went through about an 11-year period when I didn't do that. So I started making more of an issue of it. But the other thing you should mention, because I had been thinking about going to school to study architecture, I met some young architects, with just a gopher for them for a while. It was Copeland, Penholm, Hagman, Yaw, which during the eighties, nineties, into the 2000s, designed half the new buildings in downtown Aspen. So it was a real happening kind of firm. At one point, one of the models had fallen off the wall, so I worked on repairing it. And then, one day, I hung over the shoulder of one of the partners while he laid out a model from scratch. I did models for them for a couple, three years, and they hit a shallow spot where there wasn't enough work. So I went around with some of my photos to the various architectural firms, and voila, I had a one-man business.
So you are a product of somebody that is, in a way, self-made, got, went out there and, and developed a skill out in the world.
I had taken drafting in high school, other than that, I learned by doing.
Yeah.
And create, and I created a demand for the product just by the fact that there was someone available to do it. When I stopped, people just got along without the models.
Right.
As long as I was available to do them, if you're going to build, even then, if you're going to build a very expensive private home, would you like to see what it looks like first?
Yeah.
And if you're the architect, would you like to have that kind of approval before you proceed?
Right.
Of knowing that they know what they're getting?
Physical 3D renderings, no digital 3D renderings, that type of thing, and, and, well, how do you, I mean, how do you feel about that, about the idea that we need to be out in the world, the young people need to be out in the world these days, and getting that experience versus necessarily going to college? Is that, that's kind of off, off the top of my head, but it sparks that, because today and this, this day, it actually is, means something.
The lack of vocational training in the schools, I think, is one of the scariest things that's happened since I went to school. Because I had friends who were going to, you know, auto mechanic shop. I was very good in metalworking. There isn't anything like that that I know of. I, I mean, if not for one very odd thing that happened to me in junior high school, I might very well have become a machinist. And that, I think, is almost completely gone from our educational system now.
Right.
And the old, I'm trying to think, what they used to call the system even in Europe hundreds of years ago, where you would, well, the apprentice system, I'm trying to think what they call, you know.
Intern, oh, yeah.
Well, now, we call them interns.
Journeymen.
Journey, well, there's that. I may come up with it later. That's how it usually happens. We'll be talking about something else. But yeah, the, the fact that there's no structure to that anymore. And I'll, by the way, I think it's one of the reasons why Hispanic communities do very well, because they use their family connections. And if you've got a nephew who needs some work, and you're a plumber, you show him how to do it. It's that simple. You end up with, you know, all kinds of trades that are getting learned by the younger generation because of the way they do that. And I suppose eventually, that'll start to break down like everything else does, once you start mixing with a predominant culture. But I think there's a reason why most of the, what we used to consider skilled trades are now held by Hispanics, because they have that network of, okay, your nephew can come work for me, and if he likes it, fine, if he doesn't...
And I think that's okay.
Well, you do that, don't you?
Yes, I, we try to pass that on, but I think we've grown up somewhat in a generation of saying, oh, I don't want to work with that, or I want to do my own thing, you know, and that's okay too. But I think we always would like to hand it down.
Well, I think, I think it almost started with the whole conundrum of, you can get the job if you have experience, but where do you get the experience?
Experience.
And people sort of shied away from the types of things where you couldn't just get a degree and have that be your calling card when you went to look for work. Because we sort of took away the opportunity to have some kind of experience. So if you can't get into certain trades without experience, I mean, it seems like a diminishing number of people. How the heck do you train a farmer from scratch?
Right, right.
You know, and where are we going to get them?
Yeah, right.
You know, I'm not sure how it proceeds from here, but I won't be around for all of it, but as much as I could stick around for, I continue to be fascinated by how this is going to continue to function. On a really mechanical level, not even ideology or anything, just one person learning from another, transferring that down, you know.
Well, I'm with you there. So let me ask you a little bit about your, your, your business experience and your professional experience in Aspen, in the prior, just recent prior days.
Well, I did build models for 29 years. And when I burnt out, for a while, I was going to try to use some of the materials that I had developed as a product line.
Oh.
And the internet was just coming on, digital cameras had finally become affordable. I developed a way of photographing real building materials, cloning them onto a sheet of paper, so that when I cut the model out and assembled it, the model looked like the building materials it was going to be made from.
Oh, wow, that's...
So it was a major improvement in the way of doing it. What I didn't realize is I had not developed the kind of relationships with people that lead to them investing in your business. And the other problem was that in Aspen, people who were interested in investing were used to sitting around with someone who was pitching them on an idea that was going to gross 400 million by year five, and then they were going to go public. Well, there I was, talking about a million-dollar-a-year business where 50% of it would be profit. He said, God, that sounds great. But instead, I was getting people going, well, why would you do that? Why don't you make some real money? So I was in the wrong...
Well, that goes on today as well.
Well, it's gone on forever.
Ever, right.
But, you know, it, it's like anything else, if you, if you know about that in advance, maybe some of the people that I did work for, I would have been working harder on developing kind of relationship where when I needed 200 grand to start a business, they would have been more receptive. It wouldn't have been like, oh, I've known you for 10 years, and all of a sudden, you're trying to get me to invest in something.
Right, right, right.
So there's, there's a way of sort of building that relationship that I knew nothing about.
Right, right.
So when I declared bankruptcy, it was way before anybody else, I was way ahead of the curve. But I tried, I worked on that for a long time before I finally gave up on it. But part of the problem with doing models is I never, I never felt comfortable with the idea that someone else was going to be dependent on the work I could develop. You know, I always, I always get a chuckle when people talk about working from paycheck to paycheck.
Right.
Well, that implies there's some pool of money from which that paycheck is being drawn. It's a whole different when you're working job to job. The phone doesn't ring, you don't have any work.
Right, right.
But at some point, I got the idea that I should probably build a house, because building equity in the house is one of the things you need when you get older.
Real estate, absolutely.
So I was, I only came across that idea about 20 years too late. But I did find a nice little lot down on the Crystal River in Avalanche Creek subdivision. And I'd been around construction long enough, I felt comfortable designing and being the general contractor on my own house. Got it built, got into it, and the phone had stopped ringing. Well, I didn't really think that much of it at first, and I was working on this product line that I was going to, I was, I didn't care if the models kind of dropped off a little, because I was going to be selling this product.
No, I get you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it took me a couple of years to realize that I was rapidly going bankrupt. And what, it finally occurred to me that a lot of the jobs that I had ever gotten were just from the fact that I was in downtown Aspen every day.
Right.
I probably got a third of my work from the Wienerstube joiners table.
Right, gotcha.
And I suddenly realized, I haven't talked to anybody that I would normally get work from.
Right.
In a year. You know, out of sight, out of mind.
That's exactly right. That hasn't changed.
Based on all of that experience, at about that same time, I, I met a very nice lady who, who can put up with me pretty much on a regular, not necessarily full-time basis, but, and, and she wanted to get out of her condo in Snowmass, because she had to climb too many stairs to get to it. And I was going to have to let my house go, and we'd been in Basalt since 2003. So between my place, let the dump truck go by, between my place in Avalanche Creek and living here in Southern Basalt, I've been in District 5, the commissioner district I'm running for. I've been in District 5 for 25 years.
Okay.
And I've been on both ends of the spectrum, because of course, Crystal River is one of the most rural, rural areas in Pittkin County.
Well, explain it.
And here I am in South Basalt, which is the urban portion of District 5.
Okay.
So I have experience with both.
Well, tell us that, that, so this will just transitions us into you running for Pittkin County. Tell us a little bit about the boundaries of District 5, for people that don't know, like me.
It literally, it goes all the way up to, I was going to say Meredith, but that's probably in the neighboring county. But it goes all the way up by Rudeye, up to Frying Pan. It does not take in most of Basalt, but it takes in the southern side of Basalt, for those who are wondering, we're on Elk Run at the moment. I never knew this till the other day, but literally, the post office is within Pittkin County.
Okay.
The line is literally through the parking lot.
Gotcha.
So, and then you go over, and it, and portions of District, I guess, 3, it is, 4 it would be, cut right up to, it almost separates District 5 into 2, but there's a narrow strip that then connects it to the section that fills in all the way up, or the Crystal River Valley, all the way up to Redstone and beyond.
Okay.
So in the past, when I lived up in that area, I got to know Martin Fiala, who was, who ran for county commissioner out of Redstone many years ago. Got fairly familiar with the Redstone political situation, but I had been so involved in Pittkin County for 30 years, that when I moved up there, I said, timeout, no more, I'm not, I don't want to do this. I just want to be one of the neighbors. Well, in spite of that, I ended up trying to help Martin when he ran his county commissioner campaign some years later.
John Martin? Who's Martin? Martin? What Martin?
Martin Fiala.
Martin Fiala, okay.
Yeah, he and his wife had the Weaver, she was a Weaver, Joan Fiala, she lives in North Carolina now. And Martin passed away a few years ago sadly, but he was a CPA, and would have made a great county commissioner.
So what is it, in a few weeks, is it a few weeks we have an election?
Well, they, they mail out ballots at October 12.
Okay, so I know something's coming up.
Since we do mail ballots in Colorado, people can start voting in, what is that, six weeks?
So what transitioned you, what was the light bulb that went off and said, you know what? I want to have input in, back into the community so it bleeds back into the residents of...
Well, let's start with the really mundane part.
Okay.
The really uninteresting part.
Okay.
There are five districts, commissioner districts in Pittkin County, and you have to live within the district you run for.
Yep.
Now, everybody in the county votes for all five districts, so anybody can vote for me, they don't have to be from District 5.
Right, gotcha.
Well, that means at most, your district comes up every four years. But we have a three-term term limit in Pittkin County.
Okay.
And in Pittkin County, incumbents get re-elected. They just do. If you want to be in for 12 years, chances are, you're going to be in for 12 years. Well, that means an open seat turns up every 12 years. So there I was, reading the paper going, well, I'll be darned, District 5 is going to have an open seat for the first time in 12 years. So the thought was, well, I can either do this now, or I can do it when I'm 80. So I thought, now is probably better than when I'm 80. But the, the other part of it is, Courtney, I've been traveling a lot the last 20 years. We had recently decided that we're going to slow down quite a bit, especially in terms of doing really long, complicated trips where we're gone for a month. We're going to cut it down, when we go somewhere, we're going to go for a couple of weeks now. So on those two levels, it was like, well, if I'm ever going to do it, this seems to fit where I am. And that's a big problem with having five districts, because you're choosing from the pool of people in that district. Not everybody is in a place in their life where they can consider doing this.
Right, right.
The other thing is, it's an open seat. If you're running against an incumbent, one, you're probably going to lose, but two, the problem is, you almost inevitably get into this negative cycle thing, where you're running against, you're trying to claim that they're not doing it right.
Right, right.
And I'm never, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't pay all that much attention to what George Newman was doing while he was in office. I'm sure he was just fine. I'm sure he was definitely doing the best job he knew how to do. I didn't want to be in a position where I got to go tear down George Newman in order for office. So it relieved me of having to be in that context. And that made it much more attractive to run for office.
Right, well, how do you, what do you feel like you're going to bring that's different?
Totally, totally different perspective.
Yeah, and, but tell me about that perspective. I mean, it's...
Well, for one, I worked for the development industry for 29 years.
Okay.
So if somebody out there is a real estate agent, or a developer, or in any of the building trades, or an architect, I don't consider you the enemy. You can call and talk to me any old time, we have a lot in common. And I, especially on the housing thing, I've never understood all the people who are gung-ho for employee housing, but literally treat the, you know, construction industry like they're some kind of an enemy. You know, they're the ones who are trying to change the place, and they're going to ruin it. It's like, well, it's not like that, you know. It's like developers, I mean, they're all different. You know, everybody has this sort of, you know, narrow view, they just want to tear down everything and fill every empty space, and there are developers who would like nothing better to do 100-unit employee housing project.
Right.
As opposed to the ones who love doing these miniature castles, where you're working through every little detail, right down to the last, you know, bathroom fixture. You know, just people are attracted to the business for different reasons. So there's that, that I bring to it. The other thing is, I have never belonged to a political party. I have never had any desire to.
Right.
I tend to think of Republicans and Democrats as being the two branches of the government party. And I really think that if, I think if our political life reflected the makeup of the country, there would be five or six major parties who were able and capable of putting a presidential candidate on the ballot in all 50 states. I think it would be that diverse.
Right.
But it's just so locked up. One of my central things for years has been, how do you break the stranglehold, the monopoly that the Democrats and Republicans have on our political system?
But do you think that is something that is relevant as a county commissioner?
Well, it shouldn't be, but somehow it is. Right, right now, it's coloring everything.
Right.
I can't believe some of the issues that are supposedly a left or a right issue. You know, it's like, I've been very involved in the entrance to Aspen question, and I'm, I'm the expert in terms of knowledge regarding the entrance to Aspen. I'm the guy.
Really?
I know more about it than anybody else.
So you talked to Michael Eisner when he wanted to do that years ago, and...
No, never sat down with Michael Eisner. But I was on the traffic committee in 1984, when we had open access to everybody from, it was a Colorado Department of Highways at the time, hadn't become CDOT yet. You know, they brought in their guys, and they sat us down, they told us everything, and I got a real good education and a grounding on that. But today, finding out that, and I still haven't figured out how people decide which side they're on, of which issue, depending on whether they identify as being a liberal or conservative, or left or right. I mean, I can't make any sense out of it typically. So just the fact that I don't approach things from that perspective, I call it the binary hell. All kinds of things just look different to me. They can't help but. I define politics as being all the stuff you have to deal with, it doesn't have anything to do with the original problem. And I'm, I'm just not burdened with much of that.
So do you feel like there's a common sense approach to being a commissioner?
I can't believe you said that. The one political group I was involved with was called Common Sense Alliance.
Oh, uh-huh.
So, common sense, yeah, I'm a big, I'm a real fan of common sense.
No, I think we get, we get distracted from our own common sense about thinking a little bit deeper on that.
Well, we're complicated.
Yeah, it gets complicated, and it gets, you know, you're juggling all this information, and when you just need to take a deep breath and a beer and say, uh...
Yeah, what was the original problem? Yeah, where did we start?
Where did it, where did it come from? Why did it come to this? And then, where's, where's the solution?
And how do people get hardened into these positions even when it doesn't seem to be in their best interest?
Right.
That's the other one that's really crazy.
Well, that's when the politics get involved, it seems.
Yeah, and it's, it's gotten really extreme.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody comments on it, but yeah, it has gotten really extreme. The other thing is, I've been, I've been a news junkie probably since I was eight years old. It was all Huntley and Brinkley and Walter Cronkite at one time.
Right.
But I used to take the current events test in one of my classes in, in high school. I got the high score every week for an entire year. I never made any effort to do it, just based on my own interests and the fact that I couldn't keep my eyes off either the TV set or out of the newspaper. I knew what was going on.
Right, right.
It's just a trait that I just somehow came with.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, if that's your trait, and you take a common sense approach to it, because you could be pulled, if you're a news junkie, you could be pulled in so many directions, but you must be able...
Or you can have an overview of all the different directions there are to be pulled in.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is you're being able to funnel that or filter that into a way to...
You might, you might find this amusing. I, we have friends in Kenya, from all the traveling done, we've got a lot of friends in a lot of places. We have really good friends in Kenya. So I subscribe to what is essentially an online clipping service for the newspapers in Nairobi. I get better international news from the coverage in the Nairobi newspapers than I can get in the United States. I have a better understanding of what's going on between Pakistan and China, and between Azerbaijan and Armenia. I mean, all this stuff is going on out there. The American public doesn't know a bit of it.
No, I know, I know.
Not a bit of it. It's amazing.
Yeah, we all need to change our outlook and inlook.
Well, it seems like it would, it would, it seems like it would do us some good, just as individuals, to get out of this, what I call the binary hell. We're just, we're just stewing in our own juices to the point, we're going to get cooked, you know, it's just crazy.
So, is there anything that you would, as a future, hopefully come out county commissioner, want to tell your constituents out there, or your, your fan base, or your Facebook followers? I don't know. You know what, what do you want them to know about you that, that people really understand?
Well, for those, I mean, a lot of people, I worked with a lot of people for the first 30 years I was here, and I was very involved in local politics. And when I moved up to Crystal River and said, no more, I did a real good job of staying out of it. People who think they know my name, that sounds familiar, this Jeffrey, sounds familiar, they almost invariably know me from years of writing letters to the editor. Overwhelming proportion of those letters have had to do with the entrance to Aspen. So yeah, that you were talking about, why did I decide to run? Well, it's been 20 years. There's literally a new generation. There may be new attitudes towards that one particular issue that I happen to know about. And I thought to myself, you know what? People might enjoy having an elected official who is unabashedly in favor of fixing the entrance to Aspen. Because there hasn't been such a candidate that I know of in at least the last two decades. I think Tony Hershey might have been the last one back in 2000. So I thought, why not? So I thought, why not? Let's go see what, let's run that up the flagpole and see what people think of that these days.
Well, I think it's a good perspective when you've been in politics and then you stepped away and watch it going on from the outside looking in. And then you know, I think you maybe have a better footing as you step into it again. Do you think?
Well, and I, and I do think, because I mean, so much of, like I said, politics is all the stuff you have to deal with. Doesn't have anything to do with the original problem. A lot of that noise, I've been hearing it for so long. Not interested, not gonna go there. You know, I wanna find out, I mean, I'm the type of guy, I wanna go out with a crew that's patching pavement. I wanna see how they fill potholes. I wanna do a ride-along with the sheriff's deputies. You know, I wanna be hands-on and, and very down-to-earth and very detail-oriented. One, because that's the way I am, and two, I really think that's been missing.
And accessible to?
Anybody, you know, I can talk to anybody. I've long been at, uh, the opposite end of the spectrum of the crew that pretty much ran Aspen for the last 30, 40 years. They're all getting real long in the tooth. There's a whole new generation coming up behind.
Right.
I don't have to go back through it with, you know, Mick Ireland or whomever. You know, he's more tired than I am because he was in office all those years. So, you know, yeah, I, I could talk to Mick right now, no problem. I always could talk to Mick, no problem. Even though I was raised to believe you, you have a, a moral and civic, you know, responsibility to oppose what I feel is his approach to governments. Which is somehow the government should be involved in just about everything. You know, there ought to be a government program no matter what the need. And I do come from a different perspective.
Well, you seem to be, have a personality that you can reach out to a generation that you know, that you grew up with, and the upcoming generation that can, is approachable, that sees you approachable, that they can ask these questions and, and, you know, so I think that's, that's a good place to be.
Well, and yeah, and I'm not, um, I'm not naturally gregarious. My, my usual role in a group of people is to kinda just watch. So I'm very much a spectator. But then when I, what my, my MO typically is, I watch what's going on in the group of people I'm in. And if I see something that's not getting done, I go do that thing. And I've been doing that with groups of people for all my life, going back to high school. Groups of friends in high school. We'd be getting ready to set up for a party or something. I'd watch everybody. If I saw something that wasn't getting done, I'd go do that. And that's another, I can't break that habit, cause that's just how I operate. That's how I think. What isn't getting done? Oh, you know, and I go do that. So coming with a fresh perspective to something as large and as complex as the Picken County government, right now I'm spending all my time reading budgets, figuring out what the financial uh, position is of the housing authority. Um, you know, looking at the open space and trails, which wow, they seem to have a lot of money. And a lot of land at this point. I ran across something the other day. They, they administer 20,000 acres of land in Picken County.
That's one of their big things. So I mean, it's.
It's probably the single largest depart, well, there's nothing, nothing that dwarfs Rafta. You know, I, I think of that as the agency that swallowed the Roaring Fork Valley. It's enormous. I mean, people don't, people don't grasp just how many bus seats we have running around the valley
Right.
compared to other areas.
Right.
It was probably 10 years ago, I was looking at, uh, Department of Transportation for some rea, uh, some unknown reason. I don't know what I was doing there. But they had this great, um, set of graphs that talked about, you know, urban areas and how much they were spending on mass transit. And they didn't bother to take it down to areas as small as Aspen. You gotta be a bigger city than that to be listed on.
Oh, I got you.
And even at that time, and normally you talk about operating and maintenance costs, even at that time, we were spending more than a whole lot of towns on the list. I go on, well, this is interesting. So they showed the population of the area they were serving and the budget. And I started going through there to see if I could find any place that was spending as much per capita on their mass transit system as we were right here. And keep in mind, this is 10 years ago. This is before the new property tax and the extra $9 million a year. I could only find two, San Francisco, San Francisco and New York.
Wow.
Were spending more on mass transit per capita than the Roaring Fork Valley.
So you look like, you feel like the guy that somebody could give a call and ask some questions and get some insight.
If I don't know, I'll go find out for you.
So tell us where we can, somebody can contact you or where do you want people to go and find out more about you?
EvansforCommissioner.com.
Okay.
I really want contacts to come through that because I'd like to have that be a place where there's conversations going on. I've put up just a couple of things. I did something on the coronavirus. What I put up, that's probably the last thing I'm gonna ever have to say about it. I've started something on transportation. Um, I would really like to know what other questions people would like to see addressed. I'd love it if somebody would comment on what's already there. But I would continue to use that website going forward as a place for a discussion to occur.
Nice.
And literally, the, the big headline is, let's talk.
Okay.
So if they will go to EvansforCommissioner.com and use that contact form, that's how I would love to hear from people and start interacting with people.
Well, I really appreciate your time today.
I appreciate you doing this. It's a great thing that you do.
And I, and I, yeah, it's great to get to know new people and get to know them.
Well, it's amazing. We knew so many of the filmmakers in the valley for so many years and never crossed paths that I know of.
It's kinda that small valley, but big valley, right?
I meet people all the time that have been here 40-something years. I go, yeah, where, where were you? Well, and then there's the one where you meet, you know, right, it's like, I know you're doing it, right?
I know you.
That's the other one that's a little scary.
Well, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much for doing this. And what is the plug for your YouTube channel? Where do people go to see this?
Oh, well, Elevation Lifestyle Network, ELN.
Okay.
New in the valley, and we are doing a lot of different things that will help people learn about each other.
So if they go there, there's a mission statement on your YouTube or is there a website that they should go to?
There is. When you get to the website, that'll be all there for them to see, so.
Oh, ElevationLifestyleNetwork.com?
Yes.
There you go.
Or the YouTube channel.
Oh, YouTube channel. You don't have a website?
No.
You've got a YouTube channel.
It's all going to the YouTube channel, cause we want to build this network so people will go.
So how many, okay, we're doing what, 20 minutes, half hour? How many clips like this are on your, your channel right now?
I don't know.
Oh.
We've, I've just been going at it. So we probably have 20, maybe, and it's not every day. It's not every week. It's like you've, you've contacted.
Is it pretty much all people or?
And you've con, it's all people. It's about the people of this Roaring Fork Valley, what they do, where they've come from and letting everybody know a little bit more about you than just the face and your business. You had to get there somehow, and I wanna know how you got there. So until next time, thank you so much, and thanks, Jeffrey.
My pleasure. Thank you, Chris.
Talk to you soon.
Oh, I forgot to ask the important question. Were you friends of the writers or the producers of Star Trek?
The Tribbles?
The Trouble with Tribbles?
Well, you know, if I was, I'd probably be sitting in a lot more prestigious chair if I would've got royalties for that, The Trouble with Tribbles, yeah.
I'm glad you know what I'm talking about. That's the first thing I thought about when you said Chris Tribble. I go, wait a minute.
At least they were fuzzy, they ball replied, and they were friendly.
Oh, they were so friendly, too friendly, if anything.
Yeah, too friendly.
Yeah, it was one of my all-time favorite, uh, episodes. And as soon as I heard your name, I said, God, his, maybe his dad worked for, you know, whatever the producer, I can't remember the producer's name now. How's that for a bling?
All right, all right.
I'm glad we settled the Tribble thing. You don't know anything about how the Tribbles got named.
See you next time.